I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of April 18th, 2024, to order at 7:29 PM. If we could say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to everyone in the crowd here tonight. I'm here, Mr. Peck.
Yep.
Ms. Markovitz.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Calau.
Here.
Mr. Lyska, I believe he could not come tonight. Ms. Susko.
Here.
Ms. Yuhas.
Here.
Mr. Maholland.
Here.
Ms. LaRocco.
And I believe Ms. Hardy is ill tonight, from what I understand.
And I'm here as Exepticio for.
Oh, great, welcome. Of course, let's first start out with public delegation. If anyone's here tonight to talk to anything except what's on our agenda, you're welcome to have three minutes to come up and say anything you'd like. Ms. McGowan, come on down.
Come on up. Hi, yes, I'm 33 Spinnaker. Again, to remind everyone in the crowd that the chairperson is illegitimately sitting there, and hopefully tonight she'll do a better job of making sure that the people that are sitting there act professionally to their colleagues and to the citizens of Eastline. Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Anybody else? Pardon? Okay, I think we can move on now. We don't have a public hearing tonight, and I think we need to sit. Ms. Susko, it's your turn, if you wouldn't mind. Let's open our regular meeting if we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Sure. Yes, I'll move.
Any seconds.
How second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So one abstention. Next, we have a presentation. It's the request of Attorney William Sweeney for pre-application of a potential development project at property identified by the applicant as 200 Pennsylvania Avenue. This pre-application is submitted under CGS 7-159B, and actually, I'll ask Mr. Maholland to explain that very quickly.
This is essentially a non- attorney Sweeney will go over probably initially in his conversation, but this is a non-binding meeting, not a public hearing. Neither party is bound by any of the transactions or discussions. It's essentially a pre-application, and we don't know that they'll ever come back other than tonight, to kind of present to the commission and kind of get a sense of whether the commission thinks they're headed in the right direction and this has any real potential. So there'll be a give and take back and forth, but I re-carbon the commission, we don't want to become predisposed to any future applications, so we want to be somewhat careful in your observations and comments. And I think Attorney Sweeney will expand on that.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Is this working?
Did you hit the switch?
Hello, can you hear me?
Not all of the audience can hear you, it looks like, but we can hear.
Does it sound like it's coming through?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'll try to speak up though, so other people can hear as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and partner at the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London. And I want to thank you for having us here tonight. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of Pelletier Niantic LLC and its principal, Eric Pelletier, who is an experienced architect and a senior housing and healthcare developer based in Long Island. Mr. Pelletier is here this evening to share with you his vision for an exciting new development proposal, a senior life community to be constructed here in Niantic. Senior life communities include both independent living residences for the elderly, as well as access to higher levels of care and support should residents need them on a single campus. Basic concept is that people can age in place with a peace of mind that if their health needs change over time, they don't need to move somewhere else or to a different facility because the assisted living, the personal care, the memory support, and the skilled nursing that people need as they age are all available right where they live already in one of these communities. As Eastline's population continues to grow older, which is talked about in great length in your plan of conservation and development, quite frankly, as does the rest of Connecticut and New England, these types of integrated living and healthcare arrangements will only become more popular and desirable in the coming years. Projects like the one that Mr. Pelletier envisions adds to the diversity of housing options that are available here in Eastline and provides opportunities for lifelong residents of Eastline to stay in Eastline as they age and their health declines. As Mr. Maholland indicated, tonight is an informal, non-binding, pre-application workshop, and it's really intended to share Mr. Pelletier's senior life community concept with you, but more importantly, or as importantly, to obtain feedback from you on his vision, to garner your suggestions and your comments, and hopefully help us refine our proposal to address any concerns prior to a formal zoning process. I realize that this commission has not often used or regularly engaged in informal pre-application reviews, but non-binding workshops are permitted by the Connecticut general statutes, and they're really intended to allow an honest and forthright dialogue between the commission and a future applicant prior to a formal submission. So to be clear tonight, comments made in this workshop format are non-binding, and so you don't have to worry unless you go really off the reservation, you don't really have to worry about claims bias or predetermination in a future application review if this project moves forward. My client would certainly encourage you to be honest, be candid, and share with us so that we know what you like and what you don't like about the proposal, or any aspect of the proposal, so that we can try to address your concerns, your suggestions, your comments proactively, and hopefully develop the best possible plan before we bring it forward to you for approvals. Some of you may be aware that my client has purchased contract with the Trachis family here in Eastline to acquire approximately 36 acres of land that they own comprised of a number of individual parcels, which we'll go over in a few moments, located between Pennsylvania Avenue and Dodge Pond. The property is currently zoned RU40. It's received a 75,000 gallon per day sewer discharge allocation from the Water and Sewer Commission. A major component of the project we're going to share with you tonight is a developer-funded extension of the town sewer system up Pennsylvania Avenue from Main Street to the project site. We've been working with Mr. Maholland and the town staff on this concept plan for almost a year now, and the design has gone through multiple iterations already, including downsizing the project significantly and the number of independent living units that we're proposing, and making serious modifications to buffering, particularly along Pennsylvania Avenue, and also the architectural design. The current revised proposal that we're going to share with you includes 216 independent living units built over phases comprised of both condominiums and apartments, a community building with extensive indoor amenities, including an indoor pool, 120 assisted living beds, 30 memory care beds, medical offices, and visiting family and staff accommodations, as well as extensive outdoor passive recreation areas. If this project is to proceed, we would need to address the zoning of the underlying land, and we would have been working with Mr. Maholland on the concept of a new special use district, which we are calling, at least for the time being, an S U E M C district, which would encourage and allow elderly housing, medical, and convalescent uses, all part of an integrated and comprehensive development plan. But before we make an application for a text amendment, or come before you or the Wetlands Commission with formal plans, tonight is really the first step in the process, and that's to get you acquainted with the property, get you familiar with Mr. Pelletier's vision, and get your input so that we can move forward together and hopefully collaboratively to make the best possible project. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Pelletier. We have a presentation of slides that are going to be up on the screen. He's going to go through them, sort of share his vision, and then we'll open it up for questions and discussion with the commission. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eric Pelletier, and I'm one of the principals of Pelletier Niantic LLC, and
Could you speak a little louder, if it's possible?
Can you? I'll talk louder.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So Eric Pelletier, and we're here to present our concept, and as Mr. Sweeney said, he described the project pretty well, but I really want to show or share with you our vision of how this community is going to possibly live. As a life community, you enter the community about 55, and you know, you lived there years. This is a very interesting site. It actually has the waterfront on Dodge Pond, and it has, you know, topography features and natural features on the site that will make it an exciting community and provide the activities. One of the biggest challenges in a senior community is giving people something to do and what to do, and not just a room and a bed to sit in, but to have activities and, you know, outdoor amenities. One of the key features here, and if we can go to this slide on the screen right now is the front elevation that will face Pennsylvania Avenue. You really won't see it from Pennsylvania Avenue because we're proposing, and you'll see it on the site plan, extensive landscaping. We did model it after, you know, residential character to, you know, kind of, you know, keep the character of Pennsylvania Avenue, but when it's fully landscaped, it will be known from a sign, but once you enter the driveway, you know, that will be the main building you'll see. I want to just talk a little bit more about the site because it's roughly almost 38 acres. It is on the north side of Dodge Pond, and you can see in the slide here, it's adjacent to the East Panigan City multifamily housing complex. We have one on the north side of that, and on the south side. And then on the south side of Dodge Pond, you have the Hope Street residential units, I think it's called Seaside Village, from what that little name says on that. But, you know, so those are the multifamilies that are in the area. The site is actually split into two parcels, oh, two portions. I don't want to say parcels, it's one parcel, but the north side is basically split from the, there's a stream down the center, so it creates nine acres on the north side that will be developed, and 10 acres on the south side that will be developed. So 19 acres is actually what's going to be disturbed for the project out of the 38 acres, so we're really only using 53% of the actual area of the property, and you'll see from the site plan a little bit more clearer. If I go to the next slide, you know, these are the parcels that we're pretty well purchasing to confine the whole property. It is being purchased from the Trachis family that's been in town here, I understand, since the 1920s, and, you know, the family has accumulated these lots, and, you know, this is the property we're buying and combining it and making it one development. This is actually the proposed site plan. You see from Pennsylvania Avenue, we have it fully landscaped, so you don't see the buildings, all you see is the road coming in. One of the first things we would have to do is we're going to move the existing house, which is number 140, 194, which is, I believe, Dan Trachis' house at the moment. We're going to be moving that a little further west and creating the driveway in that location because that's actually the high point of Pennsylvania, so forget site distances from left and right, that's the natural position for a proper driveway. New York, I mean, Connecticut State DOT will agree with that. We come in, we have a turnaround circle. On the left is the medical building we propose. We have it, it's 40,000 square feet. Some of the documents show 45. We've actually reduced it down five to make the setbacks and the parking work. The main building is 120 bed assisted living facility with 30 memory care, which is the wing that projects kind of towards the main street. And then that will have an entrance off the side that will go to a footbridge. That footbridge will accommodate kind of a golf cart, access in two-way direction, and it will give us access to the three buildings which you see to the west, which is 32 family lodging units. Whenever you check in or get a loved one, you know, situated in the assisted living facility, it usually takes two or three days to, you know, get them settled, get all their things, and the family usually likes to stay close by. So the family lodging is actually very, an important component strictly for the use of the facility. It's not going to be a sign saying it's rental and having other lodging, so it's really only for the facility. Staff, doctors that come and visit it, that we try to employ, will also have a place to stay, so it's really staff and family lodging is what we term those three buildings. You can see by the stream that comes in, you know, it meanders in, and then it goes into Little Dodge Pond. Little Dodge Pond was breached over the years, and it's dried up. One of the major parts of our project is to take the breach and actually rebuild that little portion as a dam or an embankment that will create the dam again, and then we'll have a controlled spillway, but Little Dodge Pond will come back to life. We expect it to maybe become four feet deep, based on our conversations with the Trachises. In the past years, that was a viable fishing, you know, little pond that was very active. So I think that's a real good improvement, both, you know, environmentally, and I think it's going to be a key feature. So rebuilding that pond is something that will also be enjoyed. We do have the walkways that come down. We have the little, you know, gazebo and a sun deck and, you know, little access where, you know, the residents could actually come down and, you know, enjoy the water. But the back part of the site is the residential portion. We have 144 condos actually proposed. That's those six buildings that face, you know, Dodge Pond, and then the other buildings are apartment rentals, 72. But one of the unique features in the whole project is the term mobility. We need mobility to make the community work. We've actually connected every building. We have 20 elevators proposed, one at each intersection node of the building, and we have a connected covered walkway on all four floors that actually connect all the way around the facility and then terminate at the community center, which is the center building opposite the pool. And then that has a frontal overhang that will come into a green space, and that will be a recreation area. I think it's about 25,000 square feet of recreational area, and then obviously, we still need the parking, so we have the parking joining everything together. But the connected walkways with the elevators really allow the residents to come out of their units, they can congregate on the walkways, they can move most of the people, everyone has the little scooters. And nowadays, with, you know, transportation meaning, you know, getting product and deliveries to, it's all done on carts and mobile, so, you know, that's an important feature. And then also to be surrounded with the buildings around the pool area. So we think we, or we know we really have created a real vibrant type community that will provide interaction. We do have to connect the north part of the site or the Pennsylvania Avenue side with the Dodge Pond side. We have to create a bridge. That's the only part that we're really, you know, crossing the wetland, but we were doing it with a bridge. We will allow the stream to flow into the Little Dodge Pond, but that would be a roadway bridge, precast constructed, and that becomes probably one of the first components that we have to build. And, you know, that would allow the amenities, the sewer hookups, and again, it's the only part that we're encroaching or crossing, the wetlands. Every other aspect is going to be, you know, to restore the pond and keep the stream very pristine, and like I said in the beginning, I mean, having activities, nature walks is a vibrant part of the project. We expect the facility to be about an occupancy of 500 people, and that's mostly just residents and people that are in the assisted living building and the medical building, and then there's probably another 60 staff that will be full-time at the facility. And I think that that community of people will definitely be interacting with Main Street, both for eating and activities, and, but we do have some more slides to show. There's the bridge, basically precast with the wetland, the stream going through. This is more of a blow-up of the residential parts of the buildings, and again, those dark spots between the buildings are actually the elevator connections. And again, that's 20 elevators, and they go four stories, and, you know, I think, you know, that's what defines the mobility of the project, to get around. You can see, once you cross the bridge on the left, we have a small little house, which is actually a security building. That's a two-story building, excuse me, that's a two-story building that will house the security and some of the administrative staff. They will have control of who goes across the bridge, you know, not fully monitored, but at least observed, and, you know, that's going to be a key part of any project nowadays, is security and access. So, you know, the security building, and it will be manned 24 hours a day. There's another part of the component, which is the medical building, which, let me see if I go back to the site plan there. The medical building, it's kind of behind that out parcel or the gas station parcel. You can see the medical building. We will have on the first floor radiology and imaging, and we will also have urgent care, and the urgent care will be open 16 hours a day, and we will have three ambulances associated with that, two of which are usually active. Those ambulances are, you know, any patient resident that needs assistance gets picked up, brought to the urgent care. If in case they need to get, you know, hospital care, we transport them. So we're not putting any real demand on your existing ambulance system or your fire department with every 911 call. I don't know if you're familiar with the assisted living, but sometimes, you know, you get quite a few people that blood sugar goes up and they got to go to the hospital. So that's something we try to control, and again, the ambulances, the urgent care, the radiology, and then the other two floors of the medical building will staff professionals. For this type of community, you know, we have to have specialists, and that would be regular medical. And again, the medical building is really geared for this community only. You know, not to say that someone from the town can't visit a doctor or something, but it's not really our primary objective to solicit, you know, local residents, but the care is there if someone would need it. So, you know, with that said, I'd like to describe more on the parking. The parking, we actually are providing 434 parking stalls under the proposed zoning. I believe we would be required for only 360. That's .4 per unit, so I believe we're well over that, and, you know, I think that would be more than enough to accommodate the facility. We have engaged an environmental firm that specializes in, you know, water treatment, sewer, also stormwater. We're working with Robert Fanner, who's the local PE. We're working together with him and his team for the dam restoration, and also, he's doing the soil erosion and survey work. We've already engaged the traffic consultants, Fuss and O'Neill. This summer, they did the, or the past summer, they did the traffic counts, and, you know, we're prepared to, you know, finish our traffic study. And like Bill Sweeney had mentioned, you know, the connection to Main Street is, you know, 4,000 square, linear foot of sewer. I'll see if I can get to the slide that shows that a little better. But this is the elevation that actually shows, you know, the different levels. Again, the towers on the right and left are the elevators. They go up all four floors, and then the covered walkway is integrated into the facade, and that actually gives us the connection, and again, every building is connected. This is the typical floor plan, and the floor plans are, all the units are two bedrooms. They range from 1,200 square feet to 1,400 square feet, depending on the configuration. We feel it's more of an upscale type of unit, and again, you can see the covered walkway in front of all the units, and then the elevators on each end, and this actual building that I'm showing you is one that's adjacent to the community center. This is the rear elevation. Each unit has a small little porch. This would be what would be facing Dodge Pond and Little Dodge Pond. We show at the bottom there a little gazebo with a sun deck. That's what was shown on the site plan. This is the rear of the assisted living building. We designed the parking to be more to the rear. We try to keep the parking and the cars and the traffic so it's not visible both on the entry or the roadway, but, you know, we still need parking and cars, so we placed it in the rear area there. This is more of a technical site plan. It shows the connection to Main Street, that 4,000 square foot, linear foot of sewer. And I have, the next slide shows a little bit more of the calculations, but on this entire development, we're only proposing the use in the lot coverage of 15%. And again, like I said, we're only using 19 acres of the 38 acres, and we're only occupying 15% of the total area of the lot. That's just the calculation as a breakdown, and I blew it up so we could understand it and see it a little better. Actually, the calculation shows 37.2 acres. Every time we talk with the surveyor, it changes depending on what we do. We're actually trying to buy up an additional residence, possibly two, and, you know, we would be adding that and modifying that, but generally, this is the calculation. But generally, this is the calculation. This is just an index showing, you know, the numbers and what the buildings are labeled, which I basically described. This is a map that just shows the Little Dodge Pond. It shows the bridge that's crossing, and then it also shows the dam restoration. And in our preliminary discussions with the Connecticut DEP for the dam restoration, I believe there was some talk about restoring the old ice house. It was there many years ago. And that's that square that's to the north, that little yellow square would be the location of it. And I think that's where, to the left of the, to the one side of the gas station, there was a little easement that brought down, the roadway down to the ice house. And then they used to use the clean freshwater that came in from the stream on Little Dodge Pond to make the ice, which I thought was a, a pretty interesting feature. This is a little map we did that shows the relationship of the property, the connection with the sewer. And it also shows two other points, possibly having a, a walkway path to get to Lakeview and Lake Avenue Extension. So one of the key features of, of our excitement when we saw the property, it was the proximity to Main Street. And I think this diagram shows it, where you get everybody wants to walk to town, they walk to town. There's a two, two paths that are pretty, pretty close by or, or, you know, makes it very, it makes it very accessible. But one of the other key features is we will be running shuttle services. We will run two shuttle buses that will run morning, noon, evening, and possibly on special events to bring the people into town. So there's a great economic benefit with minimal impact. And I think that's really the, the, the goal or the, the real benefit, I think, that both Main Street will, will have and our project will have. So, you know, the shuttle service, the walkway paths, you know, one where the boat landing is, that's, that's just a theoretical proposal. Maybe someday there could be a little footpath across there. That would end up being further down the line after the project's built, because I think that's going to involve a little bit more DEP work. The connection to Lakeview is just a matter of, I believe, I didn't do any title work on that. I think we butt up to the right of way. We'll have to check in to see that. But again, if that's possible, it's just a walk path and it, it provides direct access to, you know, to Pennsylvania Avenue to walk, to Main Street. This is, this is the pool that was off the community center. And, you know, again, it's, the two buildings have access, the terrace has access into the pool area. The community center is going to be a main feature to bring everyone together. And, you know, it actually has a patio that will look over Dodge Pond. So this is, this is a real feature, and it's going to really add to the life community. And again, the, the goal is to give everyone something to do. The proposed zoning will also phase in what we're going to build at phase one, which would be a start, which would basically be the red buildings you see here on the slide. We have the assisted living, the medical building, and then the family lodging. And then in the back, we would probably start with the community center and the, the buildings along Dodge Pond. And then, once that's completed, you know, we would get into a phase two, which would be more just finishing the rest of the apartments. You know, we see it being one, the phase one is a major part of the project, and phase two is just really the completion. On the assisted living healthcare building, you know, we have, I think the, the regulation shows that we would do 35% more open space beyond the typical bedroom. So it's not just a building, like an apartment building where it's just packed with units and corridors. We actually are designing it so that we have, you know, kind of an open space and a very vibrant type of floor plan. You can see it's open. It has amenities for family dining. It has other features for consultations with, with doctors. So it's, it's more of an open plan. The second floor is, it still has some openness to it, but it's a little bit more condensed. And if we get to the third floor, it's very similar to that. This is an elevation and floor plans of the security building, which is the small area and that small building that was on the site plan. This is actually the medical building, front facade, side facades. And again, we're trying to keep the residential character. Again, it's all screened by landscaping, but once you're on site, we think we achieved something that makes it feel, you know, residential. These slides just basically show the lobby, the urgent care, the medical offices. And again, the, the radiology and the urgent care are two important components. That's just the back of the building. They're two important components in a facility like this because, again, from 55 to 91 to 95, I mean, there's definitely a need for the, the medical part of it. This one just shows another elevation off to the side. Again, these are just the architectural drawings. I'm just going to scroll through these to give you an idea. And then we'd be more than happy to answer any questions and, and any other thoughts you want to share. That's a connection between the, the four-story condo buildings and then down to the smaller apartment buildings. That's a view from Dodge Pond, looking at the pool and the community house in the background. And I think that's the last slide. So what I'd like to do is put, possibly put the site plan back up. And then, you know, if anybody has any questions, we'd be more than happy to share information and discuss it. And get back to that. So we'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have to clarify or expand on the medical building use? Who, who is it available to? Is it only residents in usage of the facility or is it open to the public? If you could address that to some degree so that there's a clarification of that.
Okay. The medical building is primarily for the complex. Not to say if somebody does a knock on the door and they need urgent care and they need medical, we usually don't turn them away. But we don't solicit, it's not going to be for the public. So I would, I can clearly state that it's mostly for just the community.
Is there just one way in and out of this complex?
Yes, there's one major driveway that has a separate lane for entry and a separate lane for exit.
Where's the water coming from?
The family lodging area has a separate driveway altogether. So to answer your question, there's really two. But the primary one is...
I was just trying to imagine how many cars are coming out on Pennsylvania all day long.
One of the things that's going to be part of our process and sort of the early drafts of the regulation is a comprehensive parking analysis that requires sort of a longitudinal study of, of traffic in the area. And so it's not just how many cars in a day, but when in a day do they come? Where's the peaks? Where are the valleys? And is the roadway sufficient to, to support that level of traffic? But I think that's one of the critical issues that I think the commission will have to evaluate in any application. And the way we're at least moving forward conceptually, because that's an actual application requirement for an SU EMC zone, will be a comprehensive traffic study saying that the density of the development, all of the collective elderly housing, convalescent and medical uses, they all work on the site.
And when, when you look at the elevation drawing with the roof, it actually looks like five stories tall. Are you saying you won't be able to see that from Pennsylvania Avenue, the height?
The residential buildings are in the back. The, the assisted living, that front elevation, I'll, I'll just scroll back to that.
Yeah, that one's shorter.
It's three-story. The upper level of the third story is really more just windows and gabled roofs and, you know, so really from the outside, it's, it could be considered a two and a half story building, you know? But it is physically three stories. And, you know, we try to keep the scale of it low, but, and to give more of the residential character.
I think one thing I would point out too is if we go to the site plan, this is obviously early conceptual, but one of the concepts staff was really insistent upon with us is that, it, it actually helps us create sort of an enclave type development is wanted to keep the residential feel along Pennsylvania Avenue and the buffering along Pennsylvania Avenue so that you could drive by this facility and not even know it's there. And so you really only get to the four-story buildings several hundred feet back and down into the property and toward Dodge Pond. Early designs of the project had us basically having the development up against Dodge Pond. You'll see that we haven't done that here, and we've kept a pretty substantial wooded buffer. And that's for a couple of reasons. One, to buffer Dodge Pond visually. So some of the drawings you saw don't have that landscaping sort of shown, because we're trying to show what the building really looks like. But the other thing I think is from an environmental standpoint, is not just aesthetics, but environmentally having a buffer of woodland between the actual development footprint and the edge of Dodge Pond. We've got some viewing areas and some gazebos. We have some walking trails, but we've really tried to pull back from the resource areas or the water areas to create a buffer that'll do both environmental protection, but also aesthetic buffering as well. That was something staff was really insistent upon was we look at the perimeter of the site and see what we can do to basically make it so that you don't know this project's here unless you're on the site and you're visiting.
I have concerns about water usage. Every summer we have quite a problem with water. And I just wanted to know what the approximate use would be gallon-wise and how that will affect the water to the residents that live here in town.
You're referring to stormwater?
No.
No, I'm referring to residential drinking water bathrooms.
Public water.
So, so that, that, we've been to the Water and Sewer Commission already. And with, one of the obvious things is sewage discharge capacity coming out of the property basically is equivalent to the water coming into the facility. So we had, we provided pretty substantial calculations for the development. Actually, when we went the first time, development was larger than we're showing now. And we also built in cushions for that. We know, for example, that the average multifamily bedroom, every bedroom in a multifamily development, a standard market rate, non-age restricted, is about 150 gallons a day. State law allows you to modify that number if you have good evidence of lower usage. So in elderly housing, that number is much lower. So it's somewhere between 100 and 125 gallons a day. So we still designed it at the 150 gallon level. And so the 75,000 gallon level that Water and Sewer has approved would allow, would, would cover the water coming into the project and also the sewer discharge leaving it. So we think we're within comfortable cushions for that. But we absolutely during the planning and zoning process will have to reconfirm and, Water and Sewer will have to re, we look at our calculations and basically give you guidance on that issue. But certainly an issue for any development in East Line, not just this project. Something that we, we saw as sort of a, a make or break issue, and it was the first obstacle to overcome, and that's why we've spent time with Water and Sewer.
You, you mentioned ambulances could be coming in and out. I was just, would sirens be going down Pennsylvania Avenue late at night?
No, it's not really that. The ambulances are really on-site just to transport.
Okay.
If need to be, to the urgent care. Again, if in case someone does have to go to the hospital, all they do is drive. They don't need to, you know, put the siren on. And, and what we're trying to do is not impact your fire and ambulance systems that you have now, because 500 people is quite a bit of people and they do have medical needs. So our goal is to control that and be able to monitor things.
And at our expense.
At our expense, yes.
Well, any of the buildings have like a large cafeteria or are there any little restaurants on-site or...
No, it's, the, well, to answer your question, the main assisted living has a regular cafeteria, food service to accommodate the 150 beds. The community center has a snack bar and it has a nice restaurant. And then it has the ability for classrooms and other things. So we're not, you know, any more than that. I mean, it's just basic living amenities. And the shuttle service is really, we want to utilize Main Street as much as possible. And again, the more we can bring the people to Main Street and give them something to do and take them back, because you don't want to just sit in your room all day. And that's, the goal is really to create that life community and really make it to the point where people enjoy living here.
Carrie, is, is the gas station going to be part of the parcels that you're trying to acquire, or is that going to remain?
We really have nothing to do with the gas station at all.
Just know it's nearby.
No.
Are there any plans for garages or covered parking?
No.
What about a garage or some sort of area for, you know, the three shuttles and the three ambulances?
Oh, the ambulance will have an overhang in the medical building where they'll park underneath it. It's just covered, but it's, it's open. And again, we do have the 50-foot buffer to the side yard, so it, it's screened. There's no other, you know, every other parking stall is just open parking.
Two things completely unrelated. I was surprised that most of your residential units are two-bedroom. Is that to accommodate people's guests more primarily or? It seems, it seems counterintuitive.
We, we encourage family visitation, if you want to call it that. And most of the apartments, well, the condos are two-bedroom and, you know, if, if they want to have family come and visit, there's a place for them to stay. The apartments, the same thing. You know, we try to make it to the point where, you know, they're able to accommodate their family to visit. You know, the assisted living is just single bedrooms and units, but, but the condos and the apartments, and, and most people take one bedroom and they make it a little office. And then the other one is their bedroom. So, and, and some of the other apartments, they have activity rooms. So very rarely do you really see every unit packed with, you know, people in two bedrooms.
And that's really why we find in the actual calculated data for sewer discharge and water usage in active adult and independent living units, such a lower gallonage usage because you don't actually have people living in that bedroom. People are using it as a craft room or a library or, you know, home office. And it gives them a little bit more private living space than just a single one bedroom. Again, the numbers that, that Eric shared with you is we're looking at 1,200 to 1,400 square foot units. These are relatively large and spacious units. It's a little bit higher product, a little bit higher end unit. And there are projects like this in this area, like Stone Ridge and Stonington, that are a little bit higher level.
Like Essex Meadows like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they're addressed.
Yeah, so there's a lot of, I think... Yeah, so there's a lot of, I think there are a number of contemporary projects that are examples of, and, and quite frankly, there are projects underway. You know, I know for instance, like Fairview is, over in Rotten is expanding and doing something similar to this. Why is it people looking at this? It's because this is the future demand. This is, if you look at all the demographic studies of this area, in 10, 20 years, there's going to be a pressing need for these types of living arrangements because people are aging.
And just my last thing, I, I haven't been out on this property for a scary number of years, like, like a half-century. But, uh, if I remember, it, it all drains into the Dodge Pond, right? So I mean, the, the topography of it is.
Yeah, so there, one of the things we'll be showing in the stormwater plan will be our full watershed map, but generally, yes, we drain into Dodge Pond. Or more likely, much of the site drains into Little Dodge Pond and then Dodge Pond. So, um, one of the reasons we, uh, Eric brought in sort of a specialized stormwater consultant was to design a, a plan that could deal with stormwater in both quantity, but also quality. And there is sort of a, I think, a fairly ambitious plan to restore Little Dodge Pond, um, working with the Connecticut D E P and to fix the breach in the dam there. Uh, and it could really bring that back as a, as a water body. Because right now, if you, if anybody's been out there, it's basically a wooded swamp. If all the water's drained out and it's all grown up and overgrown. So, um, there's an opportunity there to really improve the resource area from our perspective.
Is there going to be a generator for all these 20, uh, elevators in the event of a power outage? Is there independent power?
No, no. We're relying on, you know, the major utility of the area. They are.
Okay. There goes this, in my humble opinion, there goes this project.
Oh, yeah, we do have emergency generators just to give basic support, yes.
You would have those for people that need oxygen, etc., etc.
Yes, we have to have it for the medical equipment. Um, so the assisted living building will have a, an area for generation. And then the, uh, the housing in the back will mostly be, um, to light the corridors, the exits and to maintain life safety systems. Um, you know, there's, um, life safety alarm systems through the whole complex, intercom for the seniors, uh, to the security building. That security building is, is more of a monitoring station, believe it or not, because those type of conditions. So, um, you know, generation for life safety systems will be included.
So, you know, Joe Schmo, who lives in an apartment, a two-bedroom apartment, and the power's out for a week, he can talk to people and he can have emergency lighting, but he can't cook, clean or?
Well, that's.
That's a problem.
It's a problem for everyone. If power goes off in the area.
Yeah, but you're asking us for something special and I just want to make sure 500 people have electricity 24/7, 365.
Well, they're not going to have it for their, their laptops or their apartments to live, but they'll have the life safety support. The intercoms will still work, the exit lights, all those, um, I, I don't think you can go more. I've been practicing architects for 35 years and you don't give everybody electric when the power goes out. And, and to tell you that, that the utility companies are pretty good. I mean, you get one, two, three days, but, you know.
If you say so.
Would that set your long-term care portion of, that would certainly have a long-term generator on it, I would imagine, for the, you know, lockdown, you said, maybe they're going to describe that as lockdown?
This, these.
Yeah, these, the, the medical parts are full generation as a backup.
Does that include the 20 elevators?
Does that include?
Backup power for the 20 elevators?
Do the elevators?
Oh, well, elevators have to be in the safety system, yes. They're egress.
I'm just asking.
Yes, they are, yes.
Okay.
They, they are part of the egress exit systems.
Is there any place designated for, um, like unloading of food for the kitchens or cafeterias or where?
Well, it's in, after back parking area on the, uh.
Okay.
The assisted living has a service entrance. I believe it's on, in between the, uh, the medical building and the, the assisted living building. And also the medical building, um, actually has a place to accept, it's like a mini loading dock, because the medical building is actually connected to the main building by a basement corridor. If you could just see there in the, um, I don't think I have a blow-up of it, but you could see the link right there, yes, that's, that's built. Um, right there, that's a, a below-grade corridor between the basement to the basement. So, um, some of the deliveries come to the medical building and then some go to the, to reapportion there of the, uh, assisted living.
What are the age restrictions?
The age?
The way we have, we have drafted them right now is that you'd have to have at least one member of the household, if you're living in the, living 55 years or age or older, which is basically the standard, um, uh, in most situations. In most towns, that's what it is. So that's the standard that we're working with right now. To be eligible to live in those rear units, you'd have to be 55 years old or one of, one of the partners has to be, or one of the residents.
So people with earlier onset dementia aren't eligible?
Well, that's for the independent living. We have a mem- memory care facility, so that, that isn't necessarily restricted. So we could work, and that's something that we could talk about, but the independent living areas in the rear are, are elderly 55 years and, 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 uh, older. But we do have a mem- memory care facility in the front, that's that front wing. And that could be something that we could talk about if, you know, I'm sure there's no problem. I don't think the town would have a problem if we allowed that. I don't have it written that way right now in the draft. We have, we really have the age restrictions to the living arrangements of the living units.
So is the memory, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sit up.
Is the memory care facility open to people who are not residents there?
Well, you wouldn't, the memory care facility is where you would reside. So you wouldn't, for instance, go for memory care there and live in the back. That's not how it works.
Yeah.
Those are actually, um, accommodations, like convalescent accommodations for people with, you know, with.
But you don't have to be a resident who, who then has dementia to live in the, um, in memory.
No, and so, that's a, that's a great question. So you can enter this continuum of care at any point. So theoretically, let's say I was 55 years old, my wife and I were 55, we could move into, um, the condos or the apartments in the independent living. And then perhaps in my 60s or 70s, I start to have problems living on my own, caring for myself, I can move into assisted living. And if I start to develop dementia or have memory care issues, then I can shift to that. I can also go right into the assisted living or right in. It's not a prerequisite, as long as there's availability of beds.
Yeah, because I know there's a shortage in that department.
If I could just expand on that, the purpose of the medical building and having other doctors and professionals on those other two floors is really to be able to give any resident the care they need. So, um, if they want to expand in memory care or other care, um, they're there.
So in the assisted living section, is there going to be a nurse or an L P N on duty 24/7? Like in the middle of the night, if someone in your assisted living, uh, portion has a problem, is there someone that can address it with a cord?
Remember, there's two types. We have the assisted living, which is going to be a licensed facility to give care. The independent and the condominiums are just independent residents.
Okay.
But they can go to the doctor in the medical building if they prefer.
And we also have the security building in that section.
Correct.
What is the height over sea level at the highest point of the property?
Oh, we're, um, we're at least 50, 60 feet above Dodge Pond level.
So.
And that's just to the floor. Because those 100-foot buffers are, are slopes down to the pond. I believe we're about elevation 50 feet above Dodge Pond. So we're, flooding and those issues are not really a problem here.
Where on, on this plan is the highest point of the property?
I would kind of say the pool area. The, the back residential 10 acres, that perimeter of development, that 10 acres is basically one level, uh, but it is, like I said, 50 feet above Dodge Pond.
And what height is that over Pennsylvania Avenue where the driveway comes in?
It's actually just, I would say by the time Pennsylvania, we slope to the back, it's maybe an elevation of eight feet difference. Minimal.
We're going to have a four-story building with roofline that we're not going to see from the road, even though it's four stories high and there's only eight feet difference between, and we're not going to see that?
No. Because from Pennsylvania Avenue to those housing in the back, it's gotta be 800 feet?
I would imagine, but people on the other side of Dodge Pond.
800 feet from Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, I mean, there will be, there will be people who can see the buildings in certain, that can't, absolutely, there's no doubt about that. And, and obviously at different times of the year, the, the appearance will be different when you have leave-off and leave-on condition.
Oh, it's going to be more than just visible. Uh, it's going to be monolithic from the other side of Dodge Pond, of, of essentially a five-story building on a hill above, above the pond. It's going to be enormous. That architectural rendering you have, a little gazebo is very deceptive.
You're not going to see it from Pennsylvania Avenue.
I'm not talking about Pennsylvania, I'm not talking about Pennsylvania Avenue, I'm talking about the pond side.
Oh, the pond side, you'll see the, you're going to see the buildings.
You'll see a little else.
No question, you're going to see the buildings on the pond side. And, and every bit of green area that you see there is trees. And these trees are 40, 40 feet high, as you can see that, that are there now. Uh, and they're going to remain. So those 100-foot buffers all around the perimeter, and again, from Pennsylvania Avenue, we're going to do the additional landscaping. You're not going to see the buildings in the back, but you will see them from Dodge Pond.
Let, let me ask one more thing and I will let you get, leave you alone. One of your slides had the, your building coverage of no more than about 15% of the total property.
Correct.
But you're not including, I'm assuming, parking lots, roads, any, you know, all the, all the.
No, the 15% is just lot coverage of buildings.
Of buildings only, okay, that's what I thought.
Anything that has a roof over.
All right.
If, um, one member living in the condos or apartments has to be 55 or older, does that mean, say, a grandchild can live with them or someone younger than 55 can?
We don't usually get that. But again, we stress to the residents that the age limit's 55. And, uh, not to say that you don't have a visiting grandchild or something like that, but, um, we're not going to have school buses and young children going to school. So, you know, if that answers your question, but children are allowed to visit their grandparents.
Any other comments or questions?
Several questions. Are you planning on having, uh, the backup generator addressing the heating and air conditioning system?
Yes.
Okay, good.
If I could just add one point to the last question. We're only developing 19 acres of the 38, which represents 55% of disturbance. So when you ask that lot question, lot coverage, you know, I think that's a relevant point that we're only doing 19 of the 38.
How much of the 38?
Excuse me, sir.
How much of the 38 is Dodge Pond and the stream? I mean, there's a lot of it you couldn't develop anywhere.
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be Dodge Pond, but yeah, Little Dodge Pond is part of the 30, the, the 38 acres, sure.
So I mean, the number is presented in such a way to create an impression, but I mean, you can't build over the top of the pond or the stream anyway. So it's not, it's not like you're just leaving it alone out of, out of kindness.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a considerable amount of upland that's not being developed on the plan too. But you're, you're correct in that there are wetland areas that on the plan that would not be developed, would not be developed in any kind of reasonable development scenario.
Sorry, no, I'm good. I'm sorry. I think you're going to find that there'll be some significant objection from the public to the project. After a lot of election time and surveys of the town and the development of the plan of conservation and development, there was an obvious, uh, opinion of the public that we are overdeveloping. I'd just throw that out. One of the items is going to be traffic. Do you have any sense of a traffic count at this point?
We've taken existing traffic, but we didn't complete our traffic study at all.
Well, we, let me answer the question, please.
Sure.
The answer to your question is what we're, we're doing is building the baseline background traffic data. I T, uh, trip generation manual will dictate the, the generation from these particular uses and testimonials with our traffic engineer will be developing that. But we, you have to have the, the data and we didn't want to just use state available data. We actually wanted to take real counts. We actually started counting last summer. But yes, that, all that will have to be provided, Norm, absolutely.
Yeah, all right. Were you planning on traffic lights at the two entries?
We, we have not gotten to a point of a warrant for a traffic light yet. And that's something that you'll have to look at. It is a state road, so if there's a warrant requirement for it, we'll have to deal with that. We haven't even gotten to that point. And just in the general sense, the plan before you doesn't look like a site plan you would normally revolve, because it's not what it is, it's a concept plan right now. And so those types of details absolutely require, we absolutely have to do that. But we're here early because we want to get your input and want to get feedback before we go that next step.
This, uh, the reconstruction of the Little Dodge Dam is, makes me happy. I was disappointed when that broke, that was the place to skate. But are you planning on dredging out the, the pond?
Not at this, not at this time. And that's something we have to look at. And we also have to work with the D E P. So the, um, governance over dams is exclusive to the D E P, it's outside of local control. And so whatever the state wants us to do, we have to work with them. So removal of vegetation, removal of potential sediment in that basin area, those are all things that we're going to have to work on with the D E P in concert with reconstructing it. But it is important to the overall project because we believe Little Dodge Pond could be a central sort of amenity and really make the project look alive, I assume.
Good luck with the four feet. In regards to the, where Big Dodge, Dodge Pond enters the meadow area headed south, there's a dike there, is the plan to have a bridge, because there's an opening from one body of water to the other. You're thinking of a bridge or a culvert to let the water pass from Dodge into the, the brook headed south?
It is our plan not to do anything there.
Okay.
Other than possibly propose in the future a footbridge just across it. Um, that little connection is very important because all the screen water, everything going to Little Pond, and then the Little Pond overflows to the Big Pond, and then it actually exits, exits that area into the meadows and then into the river.
It should be clear though, that we don't have legal control over that area. So that's something, we talk about future potential connections and interconnectivity, it's something for us to explore, but that's not something we control right this morning.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
So you talked about keeping this stream pristine. How are you planning to accomplish that?
So one of the things we're going to be doing, I mean, obviously the first thing is to make sure that you don't have impermeable surfaces right up against it and you don't have disturbance right up against the stream. You have to have a comprehensive stormwater plan that deals not just with the quantity of water coming off the site, but the proper renovation of it, taking out suspended solids, kicking out particulate matter. That's part of the, the next step in the design. And so, um, Mr. Belter has brought in a qualified stormwater engineer to help design something that'll be state-of-the-art, hopefully using low-impact development techniques on the site to try to preserve it. It's critical to us though, that we preserve its ecological integrity, not just because we have to for our permits, but it protects the actual ambiance, the aesthetics of the property. We want to do it the right way and so we're committed to doing whatever we have to. But that level of detail, just like we don't have a grading plan yet, that stuff, all is going to come as we develop the plan further.
So in the summer, uh, the. So, in the summer, the edges of Dodge Pond are rather swampy, mucky, icky, havens for mosquitoes. Is there a plan for mosquito control? Do we not care?
Well, I, I don't think anybody likes mosquitoes, but mosquito control in natural water bodies is not something you typically do, you do, do that on artificial water bodies. Certainly, we're going to try to make sure that we don't impound water unnecessarily in low mud areas, if we're going to have water impounded, it will be in open water environments where mosquitoes don't typically breed it, read in those shallow environments, but no, we wouldn't be treating Dodge Pond or anything like that, I don't think that's, that's not appropriate sort of management at this point. It's more about our site and making sure that we're not allowing the ponding of stormwater in areas. We use, for instance, in some of the LID techniques are, that are used now are swales, bioretention swales, rain gardens, making sure those properly designed, that they flow out after that one-inch pulse of rainfall so that they stay dry, and we don't create havens for mosquitoes, certainly it's something we don't want to promote on the site.
So Dodge Pond is a pretty nasty water. You can't, you're not allowed to fish in it, you can't eat the fish you take out of it?
You can, I think you can fish on it, but I don't think there's, it's advisable that you eat fish from it, because I think there's some mercury levels maybe in the pond, so, you know, we, we're aware of that, but I, I wouldn't say it's nasty, it's, it has impairment issues like many water bodies here in Connecticut. I think it's a beautiful pond if you go down there, and it's certainly something that we see as an amenity, but we're, we are aware of, of some of those issues that have been brought up on sort of the historical use of the pond, and certainly, I don't think you want to eat a lot of fish from that pond, that's not, wouldn't be advisable.
So where is the church, the St., St. John's? I'm trying, I'm having a hard time figuring out.
The community church?
Yeah, the community church.
It's just outside the scope of the picture to the top.
The top, okay.
I think that's the gas station at the very top of the picture.
At the bottom, I think it would be.
But no, the community church would be beyond the scope, beyond where the picture is to the top, the houses that you see to the top of the picture are Lakeview Heights.
That's correct.
So, Lakeview Heights comes out adjacent to the community church, so it's north of here.
Okay, I was just trying to get myself oriented.
Yeah, that's fine, and, and again, you know, when we, when we have an actual site plan in front of you, we'll meet all your site plan requirements by showing lots and buildings within the necessary requirements, and tonight it's just literally showing you where we are in terms of the concept design, and to get the kind of comments that we've started to get tonight, you know, where we're, where we're doing well, where we might be missing the mark, those are the kinds of things that we're looking for in terms of feedback.
I think the cons, the whole concept is something that would be successful and the town could use. My two biggest concerns are the traffic in and out, and on Pennsylvania, and the height of those buildings along Dodge Pond, I'd have to say.
So how many employees do you anticipate working full-time at this facility?
Sixty-five to seventy.
And where are you housing these people?
No, they, they, they would be employees, they come in the mornings, and actually the employee is really the main traffic, everyone else is a resident and they stay on-site, so it's just typical like any other facility, you have employees that come and go, in morning shift, in the evening shift, and the, the night shift.
They wouldn't be staying at that auxiliary housing area there?
No, that housing is basically for family, visiting doctors, and just to tell you a brief story, during COVID, we worked at the Concordia Group that runs, you know, five or six facilities, and during COVID, their facilities that housed their employees during the COVID had minimal to none of the COVID problems or deaths, where the other parts of New York was famous when Governor Cuomo, you know, let everybody just go into nursing homes, so the Concordia Group didn't abide by the governor's mandate, and they actually saved lives, so, you know, but again, the family lodging is, is basically for visiting.
Could you, for, to answer Commissioner Susko's question a little bit more precisely, could you explain what a visiting doctor is, how long does a visiting doctor come, how long do they stay, you know, just to give her a sense of what a visiting doctor does in a facility?
Right, to get quality care, the doctors usually come, and they have to work with the facility for two to three days, and we like to keep them on-site so they can actually see what's going on in the facility. And so, they would come, we would interview them, they would see the staff, and it gives them a good sense of, of feeling good with the complex, because we want to get good quality medical care, so that's, that's a real component, is try to make them feel at home soon as they show up.
And those, those doctors don't stay in those units for years?
Oh, no, 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 no.
They, they rotate through.
Like?
Two to three days the most, sometimes only two days or one night.
To get to know the place, so are they interviewing or they're working? They come to work?
No, no, mostly for the interview process, and, you know, you just don't come to your facility and say yes or no, it's one that we want to feel good about the doctor, we want them to see how our procedures are, and, and usually it's a two-day trial or, or work period, and we usually like to keep them close by.
And they'll be staying there with family members of residents in memory care?
And again, it's just, we call it family lodging, but there were, sometimes for the visiting doctors, a, a night or two.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Any last comments?
And, and again, I think, Madam Chairwoman, I think you did a nice job of sort of consolidating two concerns that you have, one is traffic, which I heard, and I also, the issue is the height of the buildings next to Dodge Pond, which I also believe I heard from Mr. Foley, are there any other specific concerns that any of the other members have that we might be able to address as we continue to develop this plan? Things that, and I, I heard, you know, obviously the issue of emergency generators and making sure that people have as much emergency power as possible on the site within reason, but are there any other issues that you think that we may have missed or we need to pay more attention to going forward?
Not an issue really, but I'm just curious, do you have trouble staffing these places? Everyone I know who has a business is having trouble hiring help, I mean, you're talking about 60 people, do you think you can find that many?
Well, it's a big state, you know, we, we usually have no problem with employment.
That's what I was asking.
You know, it just, again, you got to start, and when, when, when a, a nursing home facility starts, you know, it takes you two years usually to fully occupy, so it's a process of building, and that's really what it is, and, and the staff has to build the same way, it's not just, everybody moves in the same day.
And, and a project like this doesn't get built all at once either, we, we show two phases, but there's literally periods of years throughout that process here, at least.
Two to three years, you know, the main, the, the, the first thing we do once we see that we're getting a permit is we start to apply to HUD, HUD Urban and Development Provide Low Interest Rate Funding For The Medical Facility. That assisted living building with the memory care is a $35 million project, and, and the only way it's able to be built is because the federal government gives us interest rate at 2.9%, and we basically have to put down, you know, ten to, ten, it was ten to 15% down in cash, and then they, the issue is the commitment, and that's the first thing that usually gets built. The condominiums based on sales, usually once you get enough sales, it all starts to happen pretty quick, so those are the two components that start, but if we could jump back to the height question, the buildings on the Dodge Pond are 50-foot high, the trees are 40-foot high, the only part you really see is once you clear some of the driveway and the walkway around the building, it just decreases some of the trees, so usually you see the treetop or you'll see the, the upper floor peeking over the trees, so it's not like we're going to have skyscrapers on Dodge Pond, and if you go to the south side where we have, I think the Hope Street Village, units or residential units, you can see, you can't really even see them from Dodge Pond, because when we're on the property, we can't even see it, and we're at the high elevation looking across.
I have a question about the ambulances, so it just occurred to me that there's ambulances that are staffed with drivers and ambulances that are staffed with medical personnel, and they're different types, so if someone on your site needs an ambulance with medical personnel, is that an ambulance that comes from offsite, or will you be supplying, or are you only doing transport, or will you have medical personnel in those ambulances?
There's two ambulances have full medical oxygen support, like a normal ambulance, and then there's one that's a transport, most of the patients and the people in the community only need to be transported to the urgent care, so it's not like we have sirens blasting, and, you know, they're basically just picked up, and if somebody's in with chest pains in, in the unit, usually that transport ambulance or the, the full medical ambulance goes and pretty well picks them up and brings them to the doctor, and then the other one is more of a transport, so it depends on the call. But again, the, the object is not to impact the Niantic Fire Department or ambulance system.
I just have a comment. I've lived here in town for almost 25 years, and I know Norm and Mike, this is a very sentimental area to them, and you have a lot of people around Dodge Pond who have bought their homes there because they love the beauty of Dodge Pond, and I think you're probably going to get a lot of pushback about those big tall buildings in the front, and, and I have some environmental concerns that I'm sure that you'll probably address when, when you put in an application, but I just, I just want you to know that I have heard personally from a lot of residents concerning this particular project.
I think, well, I want to thank you, you did a great job of presenting your concept, and.
Thank you for having us.
We appreciate having this more informal session.
Absolutely. I look forward to talking to you more about the project in the coming months. Thank you.
Yes. Let's do, take a three or four-minute break. Okay, we're going to reconvene? Let's see, we've got, next on our agenda tonight, we're having an election to fill a regular member vacancy, we had four very capable people express interest, and in alphabetical order, they are Debbie Jett Harris, Jim Lisca, Kathy Yuhas, and John Vilcek. If any are here tonight and would like to get up and say something, Deb?
Hello, everyone, my name is Debbie, the last name is Jett Harris, my address is 19 Center Street, Niantic. I did send in a letter expressing that I would like to get back onto the commission. The only reason why I quit in the first place is because I had a very unexpected medical emergency that was severe, but it has resolved, I was lucky. My experience goes, it's quite broad, I served as a volunteer capacity on the Zoning Board of Appeals for several years, and I also won a seat in the 2020, the last election cycle for commissioner, Eastland Zoning Commissioner. Unfortunately, because of the unexpected medical emergen, emergency that I had, I had to step down, but I had already served two years of my four-year term. I have a lot of experience, I'm dedicated, I believe in this town, I understand that zoning, we do have challenges that faces our town right now, I'm willing, you know, to sit on there, I really enjoy it, and I think I can bring a lot to the table, when I had to resign in December, I did reach the chair position, which I was very proud of, you know, I, it was, it's a lot of work, and you put a lot of work into it, and it really means a lot to me, so, there we have it, any questions?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lisca cannot be here tonight, Ms. Yuhas, would you like to say anything?
Kathy Yuhas, currently alternate, I don't have a lot to say, other than that I'm still really passionate about being on the board, I show up, I'm here, and I believe in our community and want to do the right thing for our community, that's it.
Thank you. Is Mr. Vilcek here tonight?
Hi, dear.
Oh, good.
Fifth time.
John Vilcek for Meadow Street, adjoining the five-story buildings that are proposed, so I'll, I'll say I disagree with that, but let me move on. As I say, this is the fifth time, many things have occurred, I've been to for the Board of the Selectmen, and each time I've been thwarted. I think my credentials don't include zoning experience, however, I think I mentioned at one point I was an ex-official mayor of a small town while I was in the Navy as the officer in charge, we had housing, we had public works, we had maintenance, everything that you people consider when the gentleman come before you. I did sell real estate for two years in my ancient life, so I have a little experience and background there, and I think I'm reliable, I'm honest, I'm truthfully, I'm dedicated, I make sense when I speak, I hope, and I hope this makes sense to you, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned, we have four very capable and talented people interested, do I have any comments or emotion, or?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Yuhas. Are we up to that yet, nominations?
Is there a second, we have a motion for Kathy Yuhas, our alternate, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, all those in favor? Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I, I think the discussion should include any other nominations.
That's what I've, I've always felt too, but the last time we did this, we were shut down after one nomination.
Town Council had told us we could, to do one at a time, we don't have to do every one together, so just following the advice of Town Council, we can take one at a time. I, I'll start the discussion, I think Ms. Yuhas has been a great alternate, and I appreciate, she does come every time, I do feel Ms. Jett Harris was elected and would still be here if it wasn't for an unfortunate medical emergency in her family, I kind of feel like she deserves to be here, she, she would still be here honestly as chair, that's just my opinion. Does anyone want to call for a vote, or make a comment?
No, it, it's difficult, because I, any of the four would be a perfect, perfectly good member of, of, of the committee, and, and I, I had originally liked the idea of, of Ms. Yuhas joining the board, because frankly, I would prefer people with deep roots in town who really consider the place home, but Ms. Jett Harris was in fact elected to the job, had to stepped out, I, I think that would, that's the most natural progression, is, is to bring her back onto the board, as, as if nothing had happened. So that, that's the way I'm leaning.
We do have a motion and a second, so let's vote, all those in favor of Ms. Yuhas, raise their hand. We have two not in favor. We have four, so that motion did not pass, is there another motion?
Yeah, I'll nominate Debbie Jett Harris to take the, fill the vacancy spot.
Is there a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion, or are you ready to vote? Well, let's take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You hear a aye, okay, it passed five, five yes, one against. Welcome back, Ms. Jett Harris. Okay, we will move on, and again, I want to thank everybody, because I know every single person would have been a, a good person on here. every single person would have been a, a good person on here. Old Business, the lighting and text amendments are still being worked on?
We're still working. We are making progress.
Okay.
We've been so busy, as you know, you're meeting every week, so not a lot of staff time.
Okay. And then every week, we, we come to Affordable Housing Update. We do have a little more clarification on that. Mr. Bleestell, of course, if we do decide as a commission to apply for a moratorium, he has to be the one to go before the state to ask for it. So he does not want to go until we have all the information. He has sent a couple memos. There are seven developments he still needs some clarification on. And I know our staff is working on that in between their regular work, but it's very time-consuming. He did find out that we can't count twelve buildings in the count to get points for a moratorium. So he is working on it. If you have detailed questions, you can ask Mr. Mahaland. But it is progressing, even if it's not as fast as we'd like.
Yeah, I have a question about that. I mean, it has to be the Board of Selectmen in the end that makes this decision to go to the state to apply for this moratorium. Is that right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But ultimately, we've got to put the package together, and it's much more complex than, than it appears to be on its surface because the documentation that must be presented to the state has to be things like COs, building permits, et cetera. They want from documentation. Much of that material is hidden away in the vaults. Our staff has had to go digging. And the law firm's position is we're not going forward until they're ready to go forward with a professional presentation and the facts.
Right.
As they believe they see them.
And I don't want to start them on that errand until we've had a pretty, a thorough discussion about the alternatives. Wait, this, this moratorium just doesn't give you a pass for four years.
Well, those are the things that will be discussed. Once we get the report together, and we will invite Mr. Bleestell here to the meeting to, to discuss that with you in greater detail.
Okay.
But it is much more complex than it appears.
Right.
Because the staff is complaining to me about going into the vaults.
But they're doing a good, they're doing a-
And I will say, appropriately so.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a negative, it's just a lot of extra.
So under New Business, is there anything on the floor that the members would like to talk about tonight?
Can I?
Yeah.
We are the Aquafor Protection people, which we haven't really talked about since-
We haven't, we're, I will schedule a meeting. As you know, you've been meeting every week with little time to do anything else. And I do have a couple items I need to bring forward under Aquafor Protection. I'm dealing with a couple of companies and a couple potential companies, and I'm waiting for more information on them to decide whether they can even locate in the areas they're talking about on, on two projects. So we're working on, even though you're not seeing it, I think you're going to have a little bit more free time coming up soon, so we'll address those issues. But absolutely, it's, it's on our radar.
And Mr. Mahaland, do you have anything else tonight?
We're busy. You've been busy. I know everybody's making a great effort. And you still have more work to do. Things are still coming, as you saw this evening. I think this evening went well. I wouldn't anticipate if this moves forward at all, September, and it may not, and maybe next spring even. This is a very large undertaking, and, you know, this is the very first conceptual step. As I point out, what we've been talking, not a lot, but we've had some meetings over, God, it might be 12, 13 months. The project was double the size, and when we got involved, we were able to get it to what it is today. Everybody has questions. There's a lot more information to come forward. There's text amendments, et cetera. So there's plenty of time to look at this, and we will get there if they do come forward. So I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Chicalo, do you have anything for us tonight?
I'm going to get to me this fast. Aunt Chicalo from the Board of Selectmen. So basically, we've been working on the budget nonstop. So to that end, there will be on May 13th, 7:00 PM at the East Lime High School will be the annual meeting. And from there, we'll go to referendum on May 13th, I mean May, excuse me, on Thursday, on May 23rd. And the referendum will be held at the East Lime Community Center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So people can go and vote on that. That's really, there's not too much else that we've been dealing with. Does anybody have any questions? Roseanne couldn't be here tonight, Roseanne Hardy, so she asked me to fill in.
Any further, notice you had a presentation in regards to the community center, the space planning. Any further discussion about that?
No, it was just presented. I haven't heard anything else. There was three different versions, basically. I think one was, going from memory, about $9 million. One was 11, and one was, I think, 19 million. And, yeah, but we haven't heard anything else. That was all they did present, though. I do know that the library is doing a survey right now. There's a community survey out that they're sending out to everybody in the community. I think they're at the library and just online, I guess, to see, you know, what people want in the library, if they're, if the library is going to be renovated.
Has the, the consulting committee company, they did a survey? They brought people in and-
Yes, they did. The library's just doing, I guess, additional, wanted to know what else people want, I guess, is what they're, they're doing, their own.
Good. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Nancy, do you want to plug in? Do you have a report?
Not a lot happened.
Okay.
They happened slowly. I guess there, the, there is an archaeological review that is now required that evidently is quite ominous, and they, I think, would like to do away with it. Which I don't think was a reasonable thing to do, but they didn't ask me.
Okay, thank you.
I might briefly expand on that. It's my understanding from talking with staff that some developers are saying, well, it's very expensive to do that study. Forget it, we won't do a subdivision, we'll do affordable housing. So it's becoming a catalyst, is the thought process. I don't know if they're, they're yet that it's more promoting affordable housing than it is doing what it was originally intended to. I think that's what they're starting to find. So I think that's why they had that discussion, but certainly stay tuned.
So affordable housing doesn't have to do the archaeology study?
Well, as we found out, affordable housing is a completely different animal under 830G.
That's too bad.
At some point, we will have filled up our quota of affordable housing, and then developers don't have to do anything anyhow.
No, we won't.
I don't think they'll ever.
Well, our affordable housing in this town isn't really very affordable, and that's a problem.
That's not determined by us, so that's, yeah. I don't have any correspondence. I just have three reminders. One, just in general, for any zoning commission members, just be careful what you put on social media. You may not realize it, but you may be opening yourself up to a lawsuit in the future, or may get the town in a position to be sued. So just be careful when you're talking to groups of people or on social media. Another reminder, if you go before another commission and you're speaking, just try to remember to say you're speaking as an individual. You're not there representing another commission. Also, just FYI, the Short Term Rental Committee has been meeting. They're presenting. The two co-chairmans, Gary Chicalo and Anne Santoro, are, are making a kind of a halfway report to the Board of Selectmen, May 15th. So if anybody's interested, you might want to attend and hear what they have to say. After it is presented, I'll try to get copies of the presentation, but there is a chance it could come to zoning. So you may want to kind of read up on what's been going on with that. That's all I have. So do I have a motion? Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, the thing about us speaking at other meetings, I was always told by everyone, you do not speak at any land use meetings, period.
Land use, I've been told that for land use, but like Board of Selectmen, you can speak as a citizen, but not representing, say, zoning.
But land use, planning board, wetlands, we, we have to stay silent.
And if they ask a question, just have their people talk to our people, and not say anything. That is true, yeah.
Keep clarifying that.
Yeah, thank you. So I think that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Adjourned.